Good evening and welcome to the County Commissioners' Public Hearing for April the 2nd, 2019. And we're here to consider formation of a Summit Lake Special Use District. Just about, that's what the topic is, but about moving the process forward. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public testimony, as time permits.
Sound off?
I'm sorry, no? I can't, somebody can, though, perhaps. In fact, before I get into the meat of this, I used to be good and adept at estimating crowd control in my previous life. How many people are outside in the foyer?
About a hundred.
Fifty? Fifty? I haven't lost it then, okay, good, thank you. All right, thank you. So, the purpose of this public hearing is to receive public testimony of the proposal to create a special use district in Summit Lake. In September 2018, the Board of County Commissioners received a petition from Summit Lake property owners asking the commission to form Summit Lake Special Use District. Upon receipt of the petition, the B.O.C.C., Board of County Commissioners, directed the county engineer to review the boundary and assess the financial feasibility of the proposed Summit Lake Special Use District, consistent with RCW 85.38.030. And the county engineer determined the proposed district boundary is reasonable. So there's a sign-up sheet in the back, and apparently many people have already found it. And you can add your name to that sheet if you wish to testify. You will have two minutes each. Because of the vast number, we want to get as many people heard as we can, so we're limited comments to two minutes each. I'll be calling out the names for the testimony. When you hear your name, please come right up to the podium, state your name and where you live, but also I'll call you and the person behind you, so that person, he or she, can come in and be ready at the same, right behind you. Time may not be given to another person. And, La Bonita, do you want to review the public comment timer? You want to do that, or you want me to do it?
You can do it.
Okay. Up here shows two minutes. As soon as you start, the timer's going to tick on down to zero, and at zero, when your time is up, you'll hear a beep. That indicates your time is up. If you're mid-sentence, finish your sentence, but please make it quick, so we can get through as many people as we can that want to talk. And, let me just give a couple guidelines for the speaking as well. This is a time for the public to address the board. This is not for discussion, debate, question, conversation, it's just for us to listen. So, please don't think we're being rude if we don't respond. If you prefer not to testify, that's fine. If you prefer not to testify, but you have written prepared comments that you're going to read, you're welcome to submit them to the county manager, or Public Works Director, Jennifer Walker. They will be part of the public record if you choose just to submit your comments and not speak. You're limited to two minutes each. You cannot donate your time to any other person. We reserve the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please silence your cellphones. No comments that allude or offensive, please be respectful, and, in part of being respectful, no outbursts, no "yay, boo," I mean, none of that jeering and applause from the background, please. It just takes up time, and we want everybody to feel welcome, all their comments with the pro or con about this process moving forward. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion for a for-private business, no comments that are inflammatory or discriminatory. Again, all materials that you present will be part of the public record pursuant to the Public Record Act, Chapter 42.56, RCW. Remarks about, that's not pertinent. And so, thank you very much for your cooperation in that matter. And, so, let me see, the public hearing to consider proposed formation of a Summit Lake Special Use District is now, the public hearing is now open. And we've got Tim Wilson here to do a staff presentation for us, please. Thank you, Tim, and just make sure you can, that's on, and you can speak clearly, so everybody, not that you don't, but make sure the volume's good.
Absolutely. Is it on?
Can you hear him?
It's on.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Tim Wilson, I'm the Water Resources Manager with Public Works. As you mentioned previously, in September 2018, the Board of County Commissioners received a valid petition from Summit Lake property owners asking the commission to form Summit Lake Special Use District. The rules that guide the creation and operation of a special district are contained within RCW Chapter 85.38. A flowchart of the major steps of the process is included in the packet of materials before you. The petition proposes an annual budget of $134,600 to fund projects that support water quality improvement, protect drinking water, and enhance recreational opportunities. Further, the petition proposes a boundary of properties within the special use district consisting of all parcels that drain into the lake. A map of the proposed project area is also included in your packet. Upon receipt of the petition, the Board of County Commissioners directed the county engineer to review the boundary and assess the financial feasibility of the proposed Summit Lake Special Use District, consistent with RCW 85.38.030. The county engineer determined the proposed district boundary is reasonable and that the proposed goals appear feasible. The county engineer reported this determination to the Board of County Commissioners on December 11th, 2018. Pursuant to RCW 85.38.040, the public hearing set for today was to be scheduled on the proposed special district if the county engineer's report indicates that the proposed projects are feasible. Public outreach and notification for this public hearing is guided by RCW and consists of a general advertisement being published in the local newspaper on two occasions. The dates of this publication were March 15th and March 22nd. A copy of the publication is also included in your packet. To clarify to the board and to the public, again, this public hearing is just for the Commissioners to consider putting the question of formation to a vote of the public, there will not be a vote tonight. The next action outlined by RCW 85.38.050 is for the board, following a public hearing, to either reject the petition and stop the process, or, by adoption of the draft resolution, the Board of County Commissioners may cause an election to be held to authorize the creation of a special district if it finds that the following three conditions are met by the proposed special use district. The three conditions are, number one, that creation of the special district will be conducive to the public health, convenience, and welfare; number two, that the creation of the special district will be of special benefit to a majority of the lands included within the special district; and number three, that the proposed improvements are feasible and economical, and that the benefits of these improvements exceed costs of the improvements. I would add, to date, Thurston County has received 60 written comments as of about an hour ago regarding the formation of the Summit Lake Special Use District. You have most of those comments in your packet before you. Twenty-five of the comments are in support of the formation, while 35 of the comments are opposed to the formation. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I don't think so.
I just want to reiterate that, should we take action tonight, it is solely to further the process and allow it to go to a ballot.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to say for the record that Commissioner Gary Edwards is excused tonight. He had a personal commitment, he can't be here. So, with that, any other comments, or?
Nope.
Okay. What I will do, thank you, Tim, what I will do, I will call your name out, and you're welcome, like I said, you're welcome to come up and introduce yourself for the record and where you live, and two minutes is the max, we can go. There's a few people on the, that signed in, that chose, has chosen, ticked the box, they don't want to testify, that's greatly appreciated, thank you. But others have not ticked yes or no, so I'll get to that, I'll call you up, in fact, I won't call you up, I'll just ask you if they want to come up. And then, if anybody changes their mind at the very end, if we're here, you know, before midnight, I'll ask if anybody else wants, that hasn't signed up, but they want to speak. So, everybody will have a chance to be heard. But again, this is about moving the process forward, not, should you have one, or should you not have one. It's about moving it forward to the ballot. So, the first one to have on the, signed up, and if I mispronounce your name, please forgive me. The first one coming up will be Deborah Martinelli, followed by Jack Benjamin. Oh, over there, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Before you start the clock ticking?
Will you move the microphone down, right directly in front of you, there you go, thank you.
Before you start the clock ticking, I, just on behalf of all the people that came here, I would like to say that two minutes is fairly insufficient for making comments. This is a very big decision for our community, and I wish you would reconsider that. But, then you can start me, on whatever time period you want.
You just jump right into it, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. I am a full-time resident at Summit Lake. My name is Deborah Martinelli. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself, the health of my Summit Lake community, and the health of our lake. I believe all Summit Lake residents should have a good water quality supply. It is imperative to our health. We are unique that Summit Lake is the water supply for most of the properties around the lake. And if you look at an attachment that I have supplied to you, there's a graph developed by the Thurston County Regional Planning Council for Summit Lake that indicates it is our only viable source for water. We can't all drill wells and think, wells and think they are going to provide water that we need. In the spring of 2017, a neurotoxin that builds up in the body called antotoxin A was found in samples of our lake water. Consumption of antotoxin A can lead to nervous disorders and eventually death. We were advised through public health advisories not to use or drink the water. This went on for months. Boiling was not an option, there is no way to effectively filter this toxin from home water systems. We only know about antotoxin A because of some astute residents who called the county for testing algae in our lake. I believe our county needs regular water testing at multiple locations around our lake. All other water systems are tested rigorously, why isn't ours? Septic systems are believed to be the primary cause of the problems, both directly and indirectly as a nutrient load source for algae. Inspection and testing of all septic systems on our lake should be mandatory, not just complex systems. There are other best practices that our lake residents could employ to keep our lake clean and healthy. If we could be informed on what those best practices are, maybe we could work as a community to help. As Commissioners, you bear responsibility for the management of this county and how its resources are deployed, as well as our welfare. I know it's time, could I complete my comments, one more minute?
One, no, because then everybody's going to want a minute, and we just, there's a lot of people here, ma'am.
All right.
And I really appreciate the fact that you supplied your copy.
Could you show your support, or not, to this effort?
Well, that's what I was about to get to.
Okay, just go ahead and tell us then.
My support is contingent on your support. I do want to take a vote, but I want to know that you Commissioners are with us, and that your county is going to be working with us to supply and help us to get grants and loans that might be necessary to get the testing that's required.
Okay, and it'd be helpful for everybody that comes up, let us know whether you're in favor of moving the process forward, or not. That's a big help.
I'm not sure we're hearing the microphone, she spoke fairly clearly and fairly loud, but it's hard to hear back there, then outside.
Outside?
It's making it difficult.
Is that a volume control internally, or inside that booth?
I've already turned it up.
It got real loud for a minute, then we'll take it, thank you. Thank you. Is this Jack Benjamin? And then after Jack is, oh, San Juans? There's two names down here, is it San Juan is the last name?
Is there a San Juan?
Oh, that's a no, I'm sorry, there we go. Kerry Hart, that's it, Kerry Hart is in the batter box, on deck, rather. All right, go ahead, Mr. Benjamin, on deck, thank you.
Okay. Commissioned is the board, county staff, interested parties. My name is Jack Benjamin. I have been a resident of Summit Lake for two years. I support the formation of a special, special use district for Summit Lake. I can't help but notice the vision statement and the mission statement on the wall, and I would submit to you that this issue falls well within both, and that's really why we're all here. Summit Lake has been a place of trade, tourism, and recreation since at least the 1860s. It's also become home to a growing number of households, virtually all of whom draw their water directly from the lake. The appearance of antotoxin A in recent samples calls into question the lake's ability to be a reliable source for healthy drinking water. I support the formation of a special use district for three main reasons. One, to provide a voice for the Summit Lake community; two, to enable us to compete for funding necessary to bring information to bear on our water quality issues; and three, to move us beyond the recent pattern of crisis met with ad hoc response to a more informed, planned, and effective approach. Safe drinking water is a key ingredient in providing for the public health. Summit Lake residents also deserve this resource. Because ongoing voluntary efforts offer little assurance that we're taking the right steps, I believe it is time for a new approach. A special use district seems particularly appropriate at this time, and I respectfully request the Board of Commissioners to support the formation of such a district, and I further request continued and even increased support from the county in the form of funding and staff expertise. Your support is critical to our success in maintaining Summit, in maintaining Summit Lake as a healthy valued part of Thurston County. I want to thank county staff for the help they've already provided, and I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Before Kerry Hart comes up, or you come up?
I practice for three, I'll go fast.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, sir. Got Raleigh and Audrey Martin, who have checked neither yes or no, so I just want to know if you're speaking or not.
We pass.
Okay, thank you. Then I have on deck would be Joni or Craig Fuchs, if you're, if you're, you also didn't check the box.
No.
No. That's good. So, the next one, I don't mean that's good, you know what I mean. Stephen, Stephen Lazon, or Lazan?
Yes.
You're up, okay, thank you, so you're next, then. All right, Mr. Hart, go ahead, thank you.
Commissioners, my name is Kerry Hart. I reside full-time at 1505 Summit Lake Shore Road, Northwest Olympia, District 3.
Excuse me, the mic is not on.
Can you hear me now?
Can you start?
Okay, here it comes. I have researched toxic algae blooms in the lake districts for the past two years. Additionally, I have interviewed over 30 knowledgeable individuals to verify the information that was gathered and shared with property owners on Summit Lake. For several months, I kept an open mind, but with the increased knowledge I gained, I am convinced that a special district for Summit Lake is not the right thing to do. The issue is the past toxic algae blooms. Thurston County lakes with an LMD or a special district were formed to control weeds. We have no significant weeds. Those lake districts have not been able to stop algae blooms despite hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on herbicides and other chemicals added to the water. We cannot add chemicals or, to our lakes, since it's the source of our drinking water. As the algae required nutrients, primarily phosphates, to grow, from expert consultation, any non-natural nutrients are most likely from our septic systems. As even well-operating systems eventually discharge a significant percentage of nutrients into the lake, the county has a Washington State mandated responsibility to initiate an OSS plan, onsite septic, to reduce nutrients discharging to sound, sound waters. We don't need to create another agency to collect additional taxes to spend on vague and ill-defined actions. We should let the county do what is required by law about our septic systems. If those actions reduce the algae blooms, that should be sufficient. If not, then we can rethink our options. Whatever the action required, it should be done quickly. The constant debate and media attention is affecting our property values. We used to be a community. Sadly, we have regressed into them and us. So, again, I'm not in favor of forming a special district, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and you're welcome to submit your comments, if you wish, if you have them. Also, before you come up, Mr. Lazon, is, anything that is, everything that's submitted, we as Commissioners will read it, digest it, ask questions about it, and we will, I mean, we'll absolutely at the very least see it. So, thank you for that. Also, when you're testifying, you're testifying to the board, not to the audience, and not to staff, but to the board. And so, when you speak directly into the microphone, every time you turn to speak to someone else, we can't hear you, we lose it. So, please, direct your comments to the board and not to the audience. So, after Stephen, I have Keith Hodges, did not check yes or no. Does Mr. Hodges want to wish to speak?
No, I'll just keep my mouth closed, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Then the next one, excuse me, I have is Jennifer Tetzloff. Okay, you're on deck then, thank you, ma'am. So, Stephen, go ahead, sir.
My name's Stephen Lazon. I am a full-time resident at Summit Lake, and I am against the formation of a special district. If the Commissioners decide to move this forward to a vote, I would ask that you hold it in the summertime, when we have the maximum number of residents at the lake. You have to understand that we have a number of people that are snowbirds that head south during the wintertime, and not back until the summer. Additionally, we have a lot of cottages where people are not here in the wintertime, they only come out in the summertime. So, if we want to get max participation from the residents of the lake, then we need to hold a vote sometime in the summertime, if we decide that we're going to move this forward. Additionally, you have snowbirds that may not be registered in Washington State, they may be registered in the state of Arizona, and from my understanding, they would not be allowed to vote on formation of a special district. So, I'm concerned about the taxpayers who are paying money not being able to vote for this issue. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Jennifer is Craig Edwards. Craig Edwards, there we go, thank you, ma'am, you're ready?
My name is Jennifer Tetzloff. My husband Brian and I live round, live year-round at Summit Lake with our two-year-old son. We support improvement of Summit Lake water quality and formation of a special use district. We both have been involved in the Summit Lake Water Quality Committee since its inception during the toxic algae bloom of 2017. At that time, we had a four-month-old baby. Thurston County Public Health deemed the lake water toxic and therefore not potable, but also that we could not allow the lake water to touch our skin. I did laundry at the laundromat. My husband and I held potable water into our home in order to drink, cook, wash dishes, and bathe. My child had a bath in the kitchen sink for six weeks, close to the stove, where I could heat up the imported potable water. I was breastfeeding, so my consumption was directly transferred to my child. There was absolutely no way I was endangering him by touching lake water. The anxiety of performing daily life tasks as if I was a pioneer was compounded by the fact that I had a newborn and there was poison inside every pipe in our home, it was all consuming. We are in a critical time. We are currently preparing our home and lives for a possible toxic algae bloom within the next few weeks, as has been the pattern for the last couple of years. Algae samples from this past weekend are currently being tested, and we're currently under advisement by Thurston County Public Health to not use the lake water until we get the test results. The special use district short-term goal is to conduct a comprehensive lake study to determine problem causes and possible solutions. Long-term goals include a robust water monitoring program, lake use studies, grant opportunities, a plan to address water quality issues, and water quality improvements. We will vote yes for a Summit Lake special use district so we can be educated on our water quality by implementing a consistent and ongoing water, water testing plan. Please take this opportunity to support this effort, it is very important to my family.
Thank you. After Craig Edwards is Cindy Sunstrom. And Jan, you know who you are, you've got meticulous hand printing, and I love it, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Hi. My name's Craig Edwards, I'm at 541 Summit Lake Shore Road, I have two homes, one in Gray's Harbor and one in Thurston County. My number one concern is...
Do you speak closer to the microphone?
My, my number one concern is, this is making up a governing body of Board of Directors for a special district, and special districts, according to the RCWs, are for diking, drainage, diking drainage, or sewage improvement, diking, diking, and then flood control. It sounds like sewage is our biggest issue, and I'm hoping there's laws in place that would take care of this originally. And apparently, I hear funding is an issue, and inspectors, we can't get to it. I'm hoping there's some way you can handle this without a special district. I know, like, when I got my water rights, there was, I had to pay for up the line to have guys do the job on getting, actually doing the paperwork. And the same thing, kind of like on, on anything we're doing with the county, like, if I come to get a, build a house, I have to now pay $7,000 just to sit down and talk with you guys. I'm hoping there's ways that we can fund this without having to do everything we're doing sitting here today. And that's my kind of thoughts on it.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
After Cindy is Michael Patterson.
I'll keep it short, my name is Cindy Sunstrom, 541 Summit Lake Shore Road, as well as 6108 Olympic Highway Aberdeen. I would...
Can you get that microphone right smack in front of your face? You can bring it down if you wish. There you go.
I would echo the sentiments of Craig before me, and Kerry Hart before that. I am opposed to moving this forward into a vote. I believe septics are our number-one focus, water quality seems to always come back to the toxic algies, which we have no control over, as far as studying it to death, and so, anyway, I will keep it short, end it, and I'm opposed, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Excuse me, after Michael is Warren Clark. Pleasure.
Michael Patterson, 811 Summit Lake Shore Road, I'm in favor of the special district. I've spent two decades of my career as the chief engineer in charge of water treatment, water purification, and water quality, first at IBM, and then at Intel, in terms of the water used in our factories for the processes. The number-one truism about water and water quality is that you cannot manage what you don't measure. Right now, the state, sorry, the county is doing some decent measurements, but nowhere near enough, we need a lot more information. We had the University of Washington professors down to talk to us, and they said it was a fascinating study, but they said you have no data, we can't tell what's going on, we can't help you. I think the ideal situation would be, okay, if you guys can get the septic thing fixed, what if we started monitoring now, and we watched the phosphate levels drop, and as each septic was fixed, the phosphate levels dropped even further, we could check it off and shut down the special district and be done with a beautiful case study. But there's far more to it than that because of the biological aspect. The cyanobacteria, and the fish, and all of the biological aspects in play here really come into, if we're not measuring that, and if we don't have a way to study that, and we won't, if we just shut down, or, you know, fix the septics that are broken, we need a little bit more information and support so that we can work the biological aspect along with the physical and chemical, and I would certainly support it, and certainly hope that we move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Warren Clark is Kylie Gustafson.
I'm really disappointed at this time change, because, yeah, I prepared for three minutes, I started slashing things out, and now, I'm going to have to wing it.
Yeah, we haven't even started your time yet, just let you know.
Yep, this whole thing appears to me to be an attempt to do something for the sake of doing something. I believe this fits the description of what President Obama's first chief of staff said just after they won the election in 2008 in regards to the financial meltdown. You don't want to let a crisis go to waste, meaning you can get things done that you wouldn't ordinarily be able to get done by exploiting the crisis. People are less scrutinizing when dealing with the fear of the unknown. Here's a fact that I haven't heard anybody talk about, of the two algae blooms we have experienced over the previous two years, no one has come forward to claim that their health was adversely affected. If someone's health had been affected, you can bet the pro-SOS people would highlight that front and center. This algae bloom, that is really the impetus for the push of implementing this special district, is a surface water condition, as is evidenced by the tap water tests at the sites with the excessively high toxin readings. This is not a catastrophe... This is not a catastrophe. It's a natural occurrence. Now, I do want to work together as a community and in conjunction with knowledgeable people to begin the process of data collection that would be a starting point for gaining understanding and possibly finding mitigating actions that can help prevent and/or minimize the algae blooms in the future. At this time, with the president's special district proposal, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you, sir. After Kylie is Ann or Marv Vanderbilt. Go.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you to the county commissioners for taking the time for this public hearing to discuss the formation of a special district at Summit Lake. My name is Kylie Gustafson. I'm the president of Save Our Summit, a local business owner, a coach, a husband, a father, and an advocate of Summit Lake. I have been impressed in my two-and-a-half years living on Summit Lake with the community pride. Two years ago, when the toxic algae bloom was identified by the county with antitoxin A, I saw the community rally together and form committees to figure out how we can attack this issue head-on. Countless residents spent hours volunteering and bringing together information on possible impacts to our lake and options for us to address them. Coming together with two other lake residents, we formed the nonprofit Save Our Summit to take the next step and actively address the issues with the end goal of putting in place an entity to manage our lake long-term. That answer was forming a special district. We saw the district as a way to have a recognized entity to enable us to have one voice as a community that would allow us to partner and more effectively communicate with the county and state, compete for grant funding, effectively communicate... compete with grant funding specifically for a lake study, do comprehensive water testing to supplement county testing, which isn't year-round, advocate and educate Summit Lake residents to encourage best practices, i.e. safe fertilizer, septic education, stormwater runoff. And last of all, with this special district, we could control our future. We, as a community, have the ability to determine what we think is important for our lake. I'm a proponent of the work done by the Summit Lake Water Quality Committees, Save Our Summit, and a future special district, because I want to see our lake flourish for generations to come. I know there are sentiments that the Thurston County should be fixing this issue. Like it or not, the county is understaffed and underfunded. We, as a community, have a chance to be actively pursuing the causes of our algae bloom via lake studies and more water testing. We can look ahead and be prepared to act for the next algae bloom or the next water issue we have. We don't know when it could happen, but we can have an organized response in place, ready for that event. In addition, we can have a centralized communication education where all lake residents are informed and educated on the status of our lake and to keep it clean for our part. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. After Ann is Bob Wilson.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Ann Vanderbeek. I live at 1605...
Vanderbeek, I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's right. 1605 Summit Lakeshore Road. Vacation with family since 1965, third grade. I'm retired now. A resident full-time since '91. A new grandma.
Yay.
I would love it if every department in Washington State federally had the funds or took the responsibility to do what it is I feel they should do, but it hasn't happened. And it seems, based on three years of work with multiple communities and committees, that we have to form a collective energy through our entity, which I am in favor of the special district. I want to gather information. I want to know that my family has a safe place through Summit Lake, and I don't think anyone will respond to us, at least past meetings, unless we're some sort of formal entity. Politics plays a part. The previous commissioner, Ty, that you took, told me upfront, he's not touching the hot potato of Summit Lake because he doesn't know where he stands politically, on the yea side or the nay side. So, that in turn made me think, we have to be a collective front entity that draws in information through grants such as the U. We get some matching funds, but no one wants to talk to us unless we're a formal thing. So, I am in favor of this so that we can clarify what it is we need to do to enhance the lake, even though it's a beautiful place to live. I think we need information, and that's the only way in which we can gather it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. After Bob Wilson is April Williams.
I'm here more for getting some questions answered. I've been on the lake for 38 years, and when you think about this bloom when it happens, it happens now. Well, in the summertime, why is it not happening? If it's septic tanks, that's when all the people are there in the summertime. Where's the... How can we blame it on the septic tanks when it's happening now when no summer residents are here? So, I'm just confused. I'm neither against or for. I just want to let you know that some common sense, as steady as she goes, should be the approach, because the bloom should not be blamed on septic tanks until we know that to be a fact. And two blooms in a row is not a pattern. And I just feel that I've had my... raised my children there since they were born, and I enjoy it up there. These things have happened at the lake before. Technology got higher than it is now. No one has suffered in my family or any families I know around the lake. I've been there long enough to know a lot of people. I think the county owes us the responsibility to keep on trying and get it done. Now, years ago, you set up and put carbon piles or whatever you want to call it, the carbon stuff, out in the front of the properties. So many of us have passed the septic tank test years ago, and no objection came to my place or a lot of other people's. Now, maybe there's some in the records that show... This goes back 15, 20 years. The records may show what was polluting the lake, but that was only for septic tanks, not for a bloom. So, I'm just saying, I'm so confused about this darn thing. Why are we spending money and chasing a ghost? Ghostbusters never got the job done. So, that's what I think we're doing. So, I think the test, one of the gentlemen and men here mentioned that the summertime is probably the time to really find out what's going on if you're looking at septic tanks. But I don't believe it's septic tanks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. After April is Kyle Gronk or Gronky. If I pronounced that wrong, I apologize. Go ahead, April.
I have a clarifying question. When is the last day that we have to submit our written comments?
Today.
Today. Thank you. My name is April Williams, and I live at 1045 Summit Lake Circle. My local and state government has failed me. The county has done nothing to protect Summit Lake water quality. I cannot agree more with Thomas Jefferson when he stated, quote, "The care of human life and happiness and not their destruction is the first and only object of good government." My life and my happiness has been directly impacted by the toxic algae blooms and water quality issues at my home, and I, being a part of this government, must act to protect my health, my environment, my property, and my happiness. In the 70 years my family has owned our land, water quality issues have always been present. But never in my lifetime have I lived through so many direct threats to our lake's health. It frustrates me that the state and county continues this reactive response when our health, our lives, our environment, and our property are all at such a high risk of catastrophic These government entities and agencies clearly do not have the capacity, resources, or interest in protecting my drinking water and property, so I must ask that the community be given the power to protect our fragile ecosystem for our present and our future. I implore you to vote in favor of creating a special district. This government is not protecting my life or my happiness. The time for reaction has run its course and without producing a single positive result. It is now time to take direct action against the threats to Summit Lake, and I am ready to fight for my lake. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. After Kyle is Everett Brandberg.
My name is Kyle Gronky. I'm a lake resident and also one of the Save Our Summit founders. As you likely know, Summit Lake has been experiencing toxic algae blooms. These blooms began a few years ago and have continued to appear every year since. In fact, even in low levels, the lake tested positive for neurotoxins two weeks ago. In addition, three reported blooms this past weekend, which are currently being tested at the lab. Simply put, this is not a one-time event. It's a very real and ongoing issue. As a lake resident, and most importantly, a parent, addressing our water quality issues is extremely important to me, as it provides our drinking water. I have to constantly worry about the water my family drinks, bathes in, and prepares our food with. A lack of access to clean water is an issue I never thought I would have to consider when raising my family here in Thurston County. Although the county has been monitoring the situation, more needs to be done. I firmly believe the formation of a special district is the answer. A special district will allow us to address our water quality issues with a community-based approach. It will allow us to fund further research, testing, education, and action. It will provide us with the ability to tackle the water quality issues as they rise and protect them in the future. Many other lakes in Thurston County have chosen the same path. Black Lake is just one example of another lake facing local... facing water quality problems. They too chose to form a special district with great community support and achieved water quality improvements already. The formation of a special district is not a new or novel approach. It is one that has proven successful to address water quality issues throughout the state. I and many other volunteers have spent countless hours moving this forward. Today is the next step in continuing our efforts to protect the lake. Commissioners, by voting yesterday, you provide everyone in the community to have a chance to have their voice heard. It will allow the community the opportunity to vote on an issue that we all care deeply about. I'm in support of the formation.
Thank you, sir. And we have... After Everett, we have Lake Stinski... Stinzzi. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Everett Brandberg. My wife, Gary, and I have lived at Summit Lake for almost 20 years. We are owners and residents at 1515 Summit Lakeshore Road. The toxic algae bloom...
Pull the microphone down. Yeah, bring the microphone down as loud as you can. Thank you, sir.
The toxic algae bloom a couple of years ago caused a great deal of concern and panic to the residents of the lake. In the many years that we've lived at the lake, we've seen algae blooms over and over many years in a row. Only a couple of years ago did anyone start measuring these algae for toxins, and until that time, no one knew whether we had toxins or not. I believe that we probably have had toxins in the past. No one, as I know of, has ever gotten any ill effects from them. We have not, and we have continued to use the water in spite of some of the issues that have been raised by the health department. We believe that the SOS organization has used this... these toxins a couple of years ago to cause the panic in the lake and are using this to try to push this organization to have this special district. We believe that algae toxins have been a serious problem in water systems of some major cities, Toledo, Ohio, Salem, Oregon, and others. Millions of dollars have been spent trying to resolve this issue. No one knows why toxins occur from algae, and it only happens occasionally. We do not believe that the special district is going to be able to do anything relative to solving this issue. Therefore, we are against the formation of the special district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who did I call next? Lake. And then, after Lake, it is Kosher Eagle. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Lake Stinci. I live on Black Lake, and I'm also on the board of the Black Lake Special Use District. I commend the Summit Lake residents for reaching this point. Black Lake reached this point in 2013. We saw our lake quality continuing to decline, and we did not see sufficient help coming from the county and state levels. The Black Lake residents had the most to gain from planning and funding improvements. We think the special use district has been successful for us. I expect Summit Lake will have a similar success. Of note are the boundaries of the proposed Summit Lake District. They encompass the entire lake basin. This will improve Summit Lake's success because lake problems stem from the basin, rarely from the lake body itself. Finally, a new special use district will have some setup work. Resolutions are needed concerning policies and procedures, public records, indemnification, compensation, the Public Meetings Act. Summit Lake is welcome to plagiarize from our website. We found the auditor and treasurer to be very helpful in our early stages. Thank you.
Sir, before you step down, where is it you live?
Black Lake.
Black Lake. Okay, thank you. And so, is it Kosher? Kosher?
Koshari.
Koshari.
Yes.
And then, after you, ma'am, it is Laura Hurley. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Koshari Eagle, and I'm actually here on behalf of the Department of Natural Resources. Special thanks to whomever reached out to our staff at the South Puget Sound Region Office to let us know about this hearing. For those of you who aren't familiar with the Department of Natural Resources, we manage forested state trust land on behalf of trust beneficiaries. And according to our database, we have about 360 acres that are tributary to Summit Lake itself, and we manage those on behalf of five distinct trust beneficiaries, including Common School construction accounts and Thurston County funds. As forested state trust land managers within the basin, we're supportive of efforts for folks to work on the water quality issues of the lake, and we have some concerns based on the preliminary petition that we saw. For example, it requires voters who are registered in the state of Washington. As a state entity, we are not registered voters, and we're wondering how we could contribute considering we have 330 acres that would be affected by this. And we manage those as a trust land manager, so it would be... we're responsible for those trust beneficiaries in perpetuity. And so, we would just have some questions about how we would be included in voting on this based on our acreage. And we appreciated receiving the draft of the engineer's report on Summit Lake's special use district form, and he notes that the large tract of forest land that are only partially within the Summit Lake drainage area don't have direct access to the lake and may contribute little to the water quality issues within the lake. And his report suggests that removing those parcels from the proposed boundary would be a reasonable approach. We would be fine with that. Our main concern is about whether or not we would have a voice as we would... our trust would be paying into the special use district, and we're supportive for the residents.
Well, thank you, Ms. Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for the mispronunciation.
No worries.
Your first name. After Laura is... Okay, I can't get the first name. Mr. or Ms. Russo. You ready to go, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Laura Hurley, and I'm a retired teacher on a fixed income. I'm the owner of an unbuildable raw waterfront lot and an unbuildable raw upland lot. The proposal before us will increase my taxes on these parcels by 5% and 5.5% respectively. Homeowners on the lake, as opposed to owners of raw land, will only see an increase in their taxes of approximately less than 2% to 2.5%. This is more than a double... more than double the percentage rate increase. And the homeowners, of course, let's face it, have a far greater impact on the water quality than the raw landowners. Homeowners would be likely to have septic systems, emerald green lawns, car washing, and the like. As a retired citizen on a fixed income, the fact that this 5.5% increase is not capped by statute and can actually be even raised further at will by the vote of a tiny board of handful of homeowners is a frightening prospect. At the community meeting I attended, the question was asked, why we couldn't just use research from other lakes around the world that have dealt with these same algal concerns? And the reply was that an answer to those concerns has never been found, which leads me to wonder of the efficacy of this proposal. I believe very strongly that we should have good water quality, and I support meeting those goals through the structure of existing laws and the existing Summit Lake Association, which is an active body. I am opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I figured it out. It's CJ Russo.
Correct.
Ah, got it. Okay. And then, after you, sir, is Renee or Eric Johnson?
No, we're not here.
Okay.
Yes, we're here.
Okay. For the record, they checked yes and no. All right. Thank you. That's funny. That is funny. Yes or no?
Hi, I'm CJ Russo, and I have property at 401 Summit Lakeshore Road. I don't support... based on the current language, I would support it if it had to sunset three years, five years, whatever. So, it would just disappear or collect the data. That would be great. I would... I don't support it with a three-member board. I would support it with a five-member board. I think more voices are, you know, add a lot to it. I have concerns about the rate structure. My property is disproportionately affected. It's... It's priced at about nine times of what the average is, and if, if I have to pay, it'll be increase my taxes 30% over 2017. So I don't see a mechanism for changing the rate structure. I'd like to see that, too. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, who's up next from the Johnson family? I don't want to step into that. And then after, is it Eric?
Yes.
Okay, after Eric, then it is-- We're done. And then I will open it up to the public if anybody would like to add. So go ahead, sir.
My name is Eric Johnson, 2247 Summit Lake. We've been at the lake for about 13 years. We've seen algae blooms. The county just tested for the antitoxins two years ago, and so we don't know when the antitoxin started. So I don't think forming the, the special district would behoove us. I think it's money down a drain. The other thing is I think the county should step up to help us. If you look at how the assessor assesses our properties, most of the county has a one multiplier, but if you live on the lake, it's a 1.6 multiplier. So we're paying more in taxes than the rest of the county residents, but we're not getting any extra help. So I think you should step up and help us with our water quality, and I'm opposed to the special lake district. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Everybody else that has signed up, check the box no. So I'm, and there's another sheet coming. Hot out the press. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Scott. All right, Vernon Bonfield, and then John Britton. So Vernon Bonfield first. There we go. And then John Britton. Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I'm late to the party.
Don't worry, we're still here.
I saw that. So I'm just here--
Get that mic right in front of you and speak directly into it.
How's that? Better?
Yes, thank you. And your name, and whereabouts you live?
A little more? Yeah. I don't want to get, I don't want to get gross here.
You've got to get intimate with it, yeah. And then, but your name and where you live. Thank you, sir.
So my name is Vernon Bonfield, and I own a small business in Tumwater for 10 years, and I live on the east shore of Black Lake. I serve, I serve as one of the commissioners for the Black Lake Special District, and I was asked to come here and speak, at least to the success that we've had at Black Lake regarding the creation of the special use district, as well as the water quality difference that has been made since our formation. I also want to speak a little bit about how we're organized and how we're supported. I think that's important. When we started this process, we just simply met with, as a group of community, and said, hey, we've got a problem. We've got weeds in our lake that are, that are nuisance to our recreational enjoyment of the lake. Far less dire of a situation than what it sounds like that I understand Summit Lake has, as we don't drink our water. I personally, as a resident, I have about 200 feet of waterfront, and I pay about 800 in some dollars per year has been added to my taxes, is in the form of rates and charges. And as I understand it, the average homeowner on Summit Lake would pay about 150 per year. And our, again, our, our situation is not as significant or as dire. When we formed the, the special use district, we researched two options. We had the opportunity to do a special use district, and we had the opportunity to do a lake, form a lake management district, which is run by the county. And interviewing other lake management districts and understanding that you all are taxed with a lot of things coming at you and not a lot of time and resources, we decided to go at it on our own and become a special district. To me, it's kind of a no-brainer. We have a community that is self-managing the body of water that we enjoy, that directly impacts our property values, and also, in this case, directs the health of our families. It affects our families when we have a toxic algae bloom or when we have nuisance weeds in our lake.
Will you please stop hollering out, sir? Please, I'm asking you. Sir, Steve, please, stop doing this rude. Thank you.
Oh, I didn't know we had a timer. We'll talk a lot faster.
That's what the beep was.
Sorry about that.
Your time is up, sir.
That's fine. Okay, so I would just end by saying that we use org support to do all of our back office, and the amount of procedural and liability and structure that they provide our district is hands-down helped us to be a success.
Thank you very much. John Britton.
My name is John Britton. I live at 725 Summit Lake Shore Road. And I just wanted to kind of express my concerns about the formation of the special district. You know, I've been out at the lake for 23 years. There has been algae blooms, you know, ever since I've been out there. I don't know that the testing has gone on that long, but in the, so far this year, I saw online that we've tested the water eight times, and of those eight times, one of them came back with a, with an elevated reading of .13. 1.0 is a, is a alert level, and so I think right now there's some hysteria going on. I know that we just heard from somebody who said we have a dire situation out there. You know, it might be a little early to be say we're in a dire condition, and I think the county has been working with us to do, you know, some testing and take care of things. Whether the special district is warranted at this point or not, I'm not sure of that, but I would encourage the county to stay involved, and I think if we worked with the county, we may be able to solve our issues. There's outflow issues on the lake. I mean, for years and years, the lake flushes itself, but now the outflow on the end of the lake with the Boy Scout camp is getting plugged up, and we're not getting the flow out of the lake. I think the lake could possibly take care of itself if we let it and quit damming it up and, and let the water flow out freely. Controlling the boat launch, I think we get a lot of boats coming from other lakes. The contamination, cross-contamination from our lake to Black Lake to Long Lake to the other lakes, from people bringing their boats in from the ocean and running them up and down the lake to clear them out. We're getting contamination from a lot of sources, and I'm not sure that we need to look beyond some real easy fixes first.
So, sir, are you then anti, against moving the process forward?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
That does exhaust the list, but I will ask if anybody is here that would like to testify. Anybody outside, come on in, sir. And before you begin, the people standing outside, can you hear me? Is there anybody out there that would like to come in to testify? All right, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Chris Waldron. I have a house at 1549 Summit Lake Shore Road. I am not in support of the special district. However, I echo the recommendation of Mr. Russo. I think there are some things that potentially could be done if we could set this up with the sunset clause of three years and potentially expand the board to five members or so. I'm not encouraged, I have a background in environmental engineering, and this is one of the, the challenges we face in terms of water quality is trying to identify the causes of algal blooms and specifically with neurotoxins, in the case we haven't been very successful within our industry to be able to try to determine a cause and effect. However, I'm sensitive to the concerns of other people that are out there full-time that have to, to deal with the water quality issues and concerns with their children and their families due to consumption. So with that, I guess I'm kind of straddling the fence here a little bit. I'm not encouraged that we can really reach a solution, but an additional investigation for a limited period of time might provide more information to calm some of people's concerns associated with the potential for exposure. Last thing is, is I think has been commented earlier, is that we've seen majority of neurotoxins has been at the surface and not in the, in the lower intakes of where we actually get our drinking water. That might be an area where we can focus some of our time and effort to be able to come up with a better body of data to be able to make some decisions going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will open it up again to anybody that would like to come up and, and testify.
Can people supplement if they've already testified?
Yes, hang on just a second here. Yes, ma'am, sir, ma'am, yes. There we go. I'll ask, I've got some clarifying questions. You'll ask some, too. Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, I wasn't going to do this. But I think I--
Get your name.
Oh, my name is Joni Fuchs. I live at 1710 Summit Lake. And I'm not sure where I stand after listening to the testimony on this. I am concerned that it's a three-member board and that there aren't any lake residents on there that have been there for a long time. There's an incredible amount of knowledge about our lake in people that have lived there all their lives, and I would like to see them on this board. I also, like everyone else, we pay a lot in taxes. We're on a fixed income. We have people that cannot pay their dues of $60 because they are retired, and they don't have the money. I, if this goes through, I would like to see that there is some manner for hardships for people. I mean, what are they going to do if they can't afford this money? So that is a concern that I have there, and in the money that we pay, I feel like Thurston County has let us down totally. We should, we pay enough in taxes that we should be able to expect to have testing that is done on a regular basis. And the county, I, I just don't see them doing anything. If we call and it's a knee-jerk reaction, then they come out, but I, I just think there's a lot of people that don't understand for sure what this is going to involve, and I don't know, I'd just like some more information to come out. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, anybody would like to come in and testify?
My name's Richard Vining. I live at 943 Summit Lake.
Sir, what's your last name?
Vining, V-I-N-I-N-G.
Thank you, sir.
I'm retired from the Department of Ecology. Pretty much for the last 10 years, I've been involved in non-point source pollution, and pretty much, much of that relates to roads and road runoff. And the whole time I've been out at Summit Lake, I've only seen the county do one minor effort to control non-point source pollution of road runoff. And if you go along the lake, you'll see huge ducts where water is just directed right into the lake with no treatment at all. There is no such thing as a grassy swell anyplace. The only place that we really have treatment is where April's father built his own retention-detention pond to control flooding of his property. So to kind of point out the, the lack of effort by Thurston County, they'll make developers go to any number of degrees to control non-point source. The county themselves are virtually doing nothing at Summit Lake. And so, for that reason, I'm not necessarily for this group, but I'm more against it. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And is that a no? It was a no, okay. Just leads to a lot of questions. Anybody else would like to come in? Yes, please come on up.
I'm Paul Buckholz. I am a part-time resident, just weekends and so forth. My family's been on the lake for over 70 years, and we've never drank the water and never intended to drink the water. I can't understand why anybody would actually build a substantial house on a place without a source of drinking water. But my main concern is--
Can you get closer to the microphone, please?
My main concern is that as part-time people who really don't use the water for drinking are going to be taxed the same rate as the full-time residents who are really going to benefit the most by this type of proposal. So, and again, I don't think I've heard any non-full-time residents speak tonight is the reason I thought I'd come up and say, say my piece, but that's all I have.
Thank you. And again, your last name?
Buckholz.
What is it, Buckles?
Buckholz.
How do you spell that?
B-U-C-K-H-O-L-T-Z.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to say something, please.
Yes, come on up.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Raleigh Martin, 2203 Summit Lake Shore Road. I just actually came here to get educated because I'm not up on all, everything that's going on. We've had the property for 12 years, but we are now currently full-time residents. And something that somebody came, came up and said is, I'd like to read something to you. It says, "Our Vision."
Can you talk to us, sir? And bring the mic--
Yeah, okay. It says, "Our Vision."
Talk to us, talk to us.
Yeah, well, I got to read the board.
Oh.
It says, it says, "Our Vision. Thurston County is a vibrant community ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of generations to live, work, and play." Okay? We are paying 1.6, or we are paying .6 more to live on that lake because we have waterfront. Okay? I believe that with that extra money, Thurston County should protect everybody that lives on that lake because I think it's your duty, according to your vision that you guys live by, to help us come up with some answers and continue to help us. I don't believe at this particular time that it is the sole responsibility of the people that live on that lake to have to come up with answers and to fund a special district because I believe Thurston County owes that to everybody that lives in the Thurston County to honor their vision. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anybody else? Yes.
Process questionnaire, Doc. The question was, if people were concerned about three members on the board versus five? Are we locked in at three because that's--
Well, that's one of the questions. Now, we're not going to engage in that, right? We just can't do that right now in this process, sir. But if there's, is there anybody else that wishes to testify? Yes, ma'am.
My name is--
Oh.
Chris Zabriskie.
Chris what?
Zabriskie.
Okay.
Spell that one.
Is it common spelling?
I didn't. So I wasn't really prepared with comments, but I just wanted to say that I'm in support of the special district, and the reason why is because I think we do need more scientific information to figure out what's going on, and we've struggled as a community for years. And my understanding is there was studies done 15 years ago, and we got almost to this point, and now we're here again, and so we just need some answers. And if we can raise enough money to get the testing done scientifically, either by the U-Dub or apply for grants, we can get the information we need to go forward, I think, and make decisions about our lake. And it would be nice if Thurston County could afford to do all this on their own, but it's not happening. And so I'm in favor of all the work that the people have done on the special district, or at least to get us to this point. And I agree with Michael Patterson, Jennifer Tetslav's statements this, this evening about why we need to go forward and SOS, and all the other people who stood up and said they were concerned about taxes and, and everything else. But I just think that we've been spinning our wheels for too long, and the community has tried to meet it as a group and go forward, but we can't do it, and we have toxic algae, and we can't drink it, and we, and Jennifer's statement about how it affected her family is real. And those of us who actually think that it might be toxic and causing our family's problems, it's a real big deal, so. problems, it's a real big deal. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Anybody? 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 Anyone? Okay.
I've been on the lake.
Come on up.
I've lived on the lake.
Who are you?
My name's Ken Beck. I live at 1333 Summit Lake Shore Road. My family's been on the lake for well over 70 years. This has never been a concern. It's been blown out of proportion the last two years. If, my daughter did a study. She took, she has a degree in biology. When you guys did your studies and you said it was a septic system, the thing you failed to do was a fecal coliform study to find out how many parts per million was in it, which would tell you whether the septics were doing it. Nobody did it. My daughter did it. There was none. There was minuscule amounts. So to blame the septic, to blame it all, this is a natural occurrence. You can read all over the place that the blue-green algae is occurring everywhere. And it's a natural occurrence. So for everybody to get this big scare tactic going on, deers died. I heard at a county meeting, three deers died. Oh, but nobody could produce the deers. Nobody's been sick. Nobody's done it. This, to me, to put more money at something that doesn't, is going nowhere because like it's been stated, and the Black Lake people, I really appreciate them coming. I thought this was Summit Lake people that we were agreeing to. But it's a good attempt with the SOS to try to get this blown more out of proportion. If you're going to do and spend money on something to resolve the problem, I'm for it. But you're not. What you're doing is you're going to study something that's been studied to death, that has never been, as the other gentleman said, there's no, no defining factors that, that tell us that what does it, how it does it, how to cure it. But we do know one thing. You pull the slats out of Kennedy Creek and you let the lake run its course, guess what? Blue-green algae goes away. It was proven last year. That's all I got. I'm opposed, I'm against it.
I think I got, I got that. I got that.
No more money spent on taxes. I work too hard to give you guys what I get.
And that's, that's a no. That's a no. Okay. Anybody else from the public? All right. What I'd like to do is, can we have Tim Wilson come back? Up?
No.
No, okay. So the-
So if, if-
So now the process is, if there's nobody else, then we need to move, motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. I'll move to close the public hearing.
I second that. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is shut down. And now-
So, thank you. So the next step in the process, the commissioners are going to be going through all the comments that you have received this evening, along with all the written comments that we have received so far. So I will schedule a follow-up briefing with the commissioners while they go through all the questions they, they receive, as well as all the testimony they receive. And at that point, they will make a decision on how they'd like to proceed.
And what that means is we're not taking a vote tonight to move the process forward or not.
No vote tonight.
We'll get more information, more comments coming in. We have to read these comments. And out of respect for Commissioner Edwards, he would like to read these and digest them as well. I thank, I thank everybody for coming tonight and taking the time to do this.
Commissioner Hutchins, what?
Ty, you want to say something?
Excuse me. Excuse me, part, part-
Hang on. Hang on.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Hang on, hang on.
Hold on, hold on.
Please, please hold on. Silence and noise. No noise. Stop. Please. Come to order. Please come to order. Yes, sir. Okay, you got the floor.
No, Commissioner Messier.
Oh, Commissioner Messier. Oh, good, thank you.
I just wanted to point out Commissioner Edwards will be, he either is watching it right now or he will be watching it. All commissioners will have all the information that's on the record. We'll debate it and then it'll go forward. So you're not going to lose a commissioner's input on what everybody said tonight.
So thank you very much. And I don't know if Ty's hanging out, but we may be here for just a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Pointing process timeline?
Yeah, probably, I will schedule a follow-up briefing within two weeks. And at that point, all depends how the commissioners will see the issue. There will be a formal action in another two weeks.